Good morning. The special meeting of the Independent School District 279 School Board is called to order at 8:33 a.m. on February 24, 2023. This meeting is being audio recorded and the recording will be published after we adjourn. Board members present, please state your names, starting with Director Brooks.
Thomas Brooks, board member.
Heather Douglas, school board member.
And I'm Jackie Moscata Jones, board member.
Tanya Simon, school board member.
Tamara Grady, She Her Hers, school board member.
Sarah Mitchell, school board member.
Welcome. The purpose of the special meeting of the ISD 279 School Board is to select the new separate, the next superintendent of Osseo Area Schools. Board members will name the first round interview finalists for the position of superintendent. At this time, I would like to introduce Dr. Dave Klow. Did I, is it Klow?
Klow.
Klow, sorry.
Yep, no problem.
Dr. Dave Klow, Representative School Exec Connect, the search firm retained by the district. I'll now turn to School Exec Connect to provide their recommendation for the first round interviews.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave.
Yes, good morning to all of you.
Good morning.
Tony, Thomas, if you could just pass that around. Tam, we got some extras here. Hi, Laura. Thank you. Happy to be with you this morning. Toni was, is ill. She was going to be here with me and Ken got trapped at their place in Wisconsin during the storm, so he volunteered to join by Zoom if I wanted him to, and I said, "No problem, I can do it." So, first thing I'll just point out to you is the applicant pool for this position. We had eighteen candidates who began applications. Fifteen of the eighteen actually pushed the submit button. And you can see that seven of those applications were superintendents. We had an interim superintendent, an assistant, someone who was a Department of Ed person, consultant, a CEO, founder, consultant, chief academic officer, field staff member from Ed Minnesota, coordinator, and a director. Slates, the applicants came from mostly Minnesota, but really only, I guess, about half Minnesota, which is probably a little, little less Minnesota-centric than our slates usually are. So, we had eight candidates from Minnesota, one from Illinois, two from Indiana, one from New Jersey, one Maryland, one Michigan, two Wisconsin, and two from Florida. Now, you're going to get tired of hearing my voice because usually there are three of us. I have a bio I'm going to read to you about each of the candidates. And we can't identify them by name or specific position yet at that point. So, I will read you the bios of our five recommended candidates. So, if you'll kind of bear with me. Now, I should get the water bottle ready to go. Then, once you have approved the slate, and we would hope that you would approve to interview all five people we're presenting, once you have approved the slate, then I will give you the schedule for Monday with the names attached. And also, as soon as you approve this slate, Sheri will be getting you, Sheri, do they get it electronically or are you giving them paper? Okay. Sheri has a fairly large packet for you on each candidate that will include their application, their cover letter, their resume, their proof of certification, graduate transcripts, and letters of reference. So, you'll have all of that information on each of the candidates that you will interview. And you'll have, you know, a couple days here to look at those before you interview on Monday. So, I'm going to read the bios in the same order that the candidates are going to interview. So, and I better get my glasses out. So, the first candidate is in her third year as a superintendent in a southwest metro suburb. Prior to that position, she was an assistant superintendent for one year in a large eastern St. Paul suburb. Prior to that, she was an assistant superintendent for five years, principal for two years in a large Minnesota urban district. She has also been an elementary principal for seven years and high school principal for one year in a large Georgia school district. She has been a principal in an alternative school in a large Minnesota urban district and a teacher for seven years in that same district. Her references state that she is an outstanding superintendent. She understands the operational aspects of the superintendent position, is extremely organized, gets things done, and brings with her a wealth of experience in many different venues. She's involved in many activities such as working with all academics in the district, assisting in finance situations, and involved daily in the work of the schools. She's described as being professional, personable, creative, innovative, and very systems-driven. She has been described as all business, with a heart, bright, calm, under pressure, collaborative, and centered in her decisions. She is defined as an inspirational and cheerful leader who recognizes that she doesn't have all the answers, but uses her team to move forward, toward forward. In one of her districts, she was instrumental in reshaping middle school education, expanded academic offerings, promoted strong instructional practices, and helped develop emotional and mental support for students. In her current role, she has developed a strategic plan within the first year she was in the district and worked through some very tough racial issues with the federal government. She also helped pass a major referendum with the highest percentage of support of any referendum in the history of that district. Her references say she always has the interest of her constituencies in her decisions and always gathers the data prior to making tough decisions. They say that she hires well and is an excellent mentor to people she works with in the district. She's inclusive in her actions, a team player, and understands the lens of equity issues and the need to address racial issues in context of her constituency. She's perceived to be fair and open to all stakeholder groups and has helped her district, she has served to deal with positivity and proactively in promoting success for all students. She does have a business background that has been helpful in finance issues, and she can chart a path of financial stability for districts. Her references state that she is all about kids and how to help them have success. She is noted as a hard worker and gets it done. Superintendents and school boards with whom she has worked rate her as one of their best hires. She always works proactively for the good of the district that she's working with. They say a district that hires her as a superintendent will move forward in a positive, collaborative, and unifying manner. She has her Bachelor of Arts degree from the University of Minnesota, her K-12 principal licensure from St. Mary's University, and her Doctor of Education in Educational Leadership from Minnesota State, and she has additional graduate work from Capella University. So, that is the first candidate that we are recommending. The next candidate is currently in her fifth year as a superintendent of a mid-sized school district in northwestern Wisconsin. Her previous position was serving as the Assistant Superintendent of Schools in a larger northeastern Minnesota urban school district. Her first superintendency was in a smaller, more rural district in northeast Minnesota. Earlier, she served as the elementary principal for a school of 500 students in which forty percent of the students were of Native American descent and seventy-five percent on free or reduced-price lunch. She also served for three years as the Special Education Coordinator for a cooperative in northeast Minnesota. Prior to her career as an administrator, she served as a school psychologist and department chair for six years in a mid-sized south metro school district and began her career as a school psychologist in a large south metro school district. Those who work with this candidate describe her as a person with drive and personality who is totally open and transparent in her leadership. Her school board chairperson, who has served in that role for seventeen years, said that he has worked with three different superintendents and that this candidate was head and shoulders above the rest. He said she is a get-it-done type of leader who can handle difficult and tough situations and who has brought a level of professionalism to the district and the community and has made significant improvements within their special education program. Another community leader says she gets it. She can translate the work of the schools not only to the greater community, but also to the business community. She is described as a relationship builder with every segment of the district and the community. She has built strong relationships with the board, the administration, the teachers, and the support staff. She spends a lot of time out of her office and being present in the schools. She knows the staff and they know her. She holds listening sessions frequently with staff. She is described as being an exceptional fiscal manager. She also manages conflict well and is especially appreciated by principals, both in her current district as well as in her large previous district. One of her administrators describes her as a knowledgeable and approachable leader who builds capacity in others. It was said that she has helped to build a feeling of family and community throughout the district. She has high expectations evidenced by the district's motto of "Every student, every day, and all means all." This candidate holds her doctorate from the University of North Dakota Grand Forks, her master's degree from Northern Arizona University in Flagstaff, and her bachelor of science degree from the University of North Dakota Grand Forks, and she received her superintendent licensure from St. Mary's University in Minneapolis. So, that's the second candidate. The third candidate, this candidate has recently completed her service of three years of superintendent of a large urban school district, serving 55,000 students in the northeastern U.S. Prior to this role, she served for eight years as a leader of the state, of a state education agency in a large midwestern state, which was preceded by her serving as a superintendent of an integration district in the same state. She earlier served as the Assistant Superintendent of Schools for three years in a large midwestern urban school district. From 2007 to '10, she served as the middle school academic superintendent in an urban district in the southern U.S. She served as an assistant principal in two large, different large urban districts and began her career as a social studies teacher and diversity coordinator in two different metro school districts. As she awaits her next leadership role, she currently is the CEO and founder of an LLC which supports the success and wellness of current and future leaders who are difference-makers. Those she worked with in her recent superintendency describe her as being personal, empathetic, a good listener, with a fierce commitment to equity. One of her board members states, "The bottom line is she listens with empathy and seeks bold changes that address the needs of students." Another leader from an Ivy League university describes her as having a potent vision for the future of education. Early in her most recent superintendency, she was faced with the COVID-19 pandemic. It is said that she turned on a dime to lead the district through this stressful period, which included securing 55,000 computers for students, seven million meals for students, and emergency updates to building that resulted in 12,000 new windows, 5,000 indoor air purifiers, and 4,000 indoor air testing machines. She is a skilled leader. As during her tenure, she transcended the terms of three different mayors, all of whom had different expectations for the schools. Another leader said she is never afraid to do what is right for students, even when it may create issues for others who stand in the way. Her school board supervisor said, "With no hesitation, she is amongst the best of the nation's exceptional public education leaders." While serving for eight years in a highly visible appointed state leadership role, she led both state and national policy initiatives while supervising an $18 billion biennial budget. She oversaw the work of the department and worked closely with both elected and appointed political officials as well as local school leaders throughout the state. Throughout her career, this candidate has raised more than $100 million in grant funds. The candidate also took part in the Harvard Public Education Leadership Project and the Harvard Project on Transforming High Schools for Instruction. She is and has been a part of professional organizations at both the state and national level and has authored numerous articles and made numerous educational presentations. She has dedicated her life to serving the educational and social-emotional needs of children while seeking equity and a special place for all of them. Others say that she has the respect and admiration of all with whom she comes in contact and that she will bring a high level of success to any organization that she joins. She's described as being hardworking, energetic, and passionate individual, and she deeply believes in the power of education to transform the lives of children and to end the generational poverty in our nation. Yet, other school leaders described her as being a principled leader with the highly, with highly-developed human relation skills in this area to lead school. Local leaders saw her as someone who is focused, loyal, principled, student-centered, and fair while leading with great integrity. Another local education leader described her as articulate, brilliant, and compassionate, and deeply immersed in professional knowledge. This candidate holds a doctorate from the University of Memphis, a specialist degree from the University of St. Thomas, the master's degree from the University of St. Thomas, and her Bachelor of Arts degree from the University of Minnesota, Minneapolis. Our third candidate. Can take a quick drink here. Fourth candidate. This candidate has currently served for five years as a superintendent in a northern metro school district. Prior to this position, she was an assistant superintendent in a large northwestern suburban school district for two years. In another northwestern metro suburban district, she was an elementary principal in three different schools for a total of eleven years, and she was also a teacher in that same district for ten years. This candidate is described as a gifted educator with strong leadership skills in all aspects of the organization. She is a quick learner, experienced in many educational settings, and an outstanding leader in districts she has served. They say she accepts and takes on challenges and is able to meet those challenges to improve the education of all students. She understands well the challenges of districts like Osseo, and she has been successful in raising achievement and helping all students have success. References describe her as warm, personal, and compassionate, and is someone who can bring people together in reaching common goals for the district. All references state that she is one who strongly believes that all students can succeed and is relentless ensuring that this will happen. She has a clear vision for education and a strong conviction to get things done. They say she is a quick read about the culture of the school or district she is in and is able to make needed changes quickly with the partnership of staff and families. She is very intuitive and is gifted at working with the board to lead the district. Her relationships with people are strong, and she is perceived as an excellent communicator. She knows how to hire outstanding staff members to lead the district and to help them continuously improve. She has a strong equity lens and is perceived as a leader statewide and in the metro area in developing programs and initiatives to address equity issues. She is highly sought out as an expert in leadership in this area. She has a great sense of honesty and integrity with strong emotional strength. References stated that she is one of the greatest leaders in our area and will be an outstanding choice to lead her next district. One reference simply says she is the best. She received her Bachelor's of Science degree in elementary ed from the University of Minnesota, her Master of Education in ed leadership from Hamlin University, her educational specialist degree and principal licensure from the University of St. Thomas, and her Doctor of Education in ed leadership from St. Cloud State University. Our fourth recommended candidate. Fifth candidate. This candidate has, for the past seven months, has been a senior educational consultant for an education and technology company. Prior to that position, she was a superintendent for seven years in a large southern metro district. Before this position, she was the Assistant Superintendent for Leadership, Teaching, and Learning in a large multi-high school district on the northwest side of the metro. Prior to that position, she was for one year the director curriculum and instruction and ed standards in the same district. Prior to that, she was one, one year an interim middle school principal and three years a principal of an elementary school in a Wisconsin school district. In addition to her admin positions, she spent two years as the interim director of the Master of Ed program at a Wisconsin university, and she spent five years in this as an assistant professor in that same university. She also taught English for twelve years in a southern Minnesota district. This candidate is known as an exceptional leader who is a visionary, collaborative, open to input from multiple sources, transparent, and leads with head and heart. She is known as one who is a hard worker, who builds a strong team, works well with colleagues and other staff, and is praised by her references for ability to build strong relationships with multiple communities and constituents. Her references state that she is a great systems person and thinker and has established processes that allow the districts to move forward in a positive, thoughtful, and systemic manner. She is highly knowledgeable about strategic planning and builds both district and site-based plans. While in her recent superintendent role, she had to deal with COVID, equity, and political issues, she has been recognized for her ability to allow all points of view to be heard and then develop a coherent strategy to deal with the issues raised. Her references state that she was a great listener, a mediator, an empathetic ear to her constituents, and by doing this gained the trust of community members, staff, and students in handling tough events in her district. Her references state that she can make the tough decisions when necessary, but always with the desire to understand the situation and its impact on individuals. She is strong in equity work for students of an equitable and fair learning environment. Her leadership helped develop a strong E-12 educational equity and excellent plan to help close achievement gaps and make all students and staff feel welcome in the district and in individual schools. Her efforts in this area have drawn praise from the board members in districts she has served. Board members are proud of her working relationship with them, keeping them informed in multiple venues, always honest and sincere, providing them strong leadership in the district and guidance and suggestions when appropriate. She has rallied the community to pass referendums when previous ones had failed. She has raised achievement and social and emotional growth in her previous district and helped develop strong curriculum and instruction programs and processes in every district in which she has worked. One board member stated that this candidate values by sharing, in the candidate's own words, "I lead to inspire, empower, and develop others to thrive so that we can collaboratively create life chances, equity, and inclusion for all students through trust, service, authenticity, and love." They feel strongly that she would be a great asset to the Osseo schools. This candidate has her Doctor of Education in ed policy, as well as a Master of Education in CNI from the University of Minnesota, and she received her Bachelor of Arts degree from Luther College, and she is licensed as both a district superintendent and principal. So, there are the five candidates. I will say, you heard the word "her" in every one of those candidates. We were going to present six candidates to you, but we had a candidate who dropped out about three days ago, I guess, who did happen to be a male candidate. I will tell you, there's a little irony here. I'm also working on the Rockford search. We presented a slate to them on Wednesday night of five male candidates, and our lone female candidate dropped out the day before we were going to present. So, Toni, Ken, and I are feeling this kind of unusual that we are presenting two slates kind of simultaneously that are certainly not gender-balanced in any way. But we do feel these are five strong candidates for you to consider. And I'll turn it to you, Jackie, too.
Yes, so, on my script, the names are here, but we want to approve the slate and then say the names, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the slate? Is there a motion to approve the slate as presented by Dr. David Clough of the School Exec Connect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I do appreciate you calling out specifically the gender question because I could see how that might be a question or a concern, so I appreciate just taking that head-on and explaining the most qualified candidates that came through for our particular search.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Tony.
Any other comments or? I'm excited about this slate, so.
Very good one, yeah.
Yeah, just, just from the information here, I'm very excited. So all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay?
Okay, your slate of candidates that will be interviewed on Monday at 1:30 PM. You'll be interviewing Dr. Lisa Sales-Adams, who is superintendent in the Eastern Carver County School District in Chaska. Thomas, would you want to pass that around?
There will be.
Jim, I got a couple extras here.
There will be extra credit.
Hopefully I gave you enough, Thomas. Right. Yep, okay. So the 1:30 interview, Dr. Lisa Sales-Adams. At 2:45 PM, you will be interviewing Dr. Amy Starzecchi, who is currently the superintendent in the Superior School District in Wisconsin, former assistant superintendent in Duluth. 4 o'clock, Dr. Brenda Casilius, who is the previous superintendent in Boston, Massachusetts, and is currently the founder and CEO of Leader Proof LLC. At 5:45 PM Monday, you'll interview Dr. Kim Isle, superintendent in the Fridley Public School District. And at 7 PM, you will be interviewing Dr. Terry Stalow, who is currently a senior educational consultant, but the previous superintendent in the Prior Lake Savied School District. So those are the five that you will see on Monday. Do you have any? I guess you've got all the information about these candidates. If you have any further questions about the process, just, you'll note on this schedule. We did, we did squeeze the dinner time a little bit because Jackie agreed that getting to your deliberations is, you know, not like, not after 9 o'clock would be better. So after the last interview on Monday, we will be leading you through a decision-making process to identify your finalist candidates. And, you know, I think you've left room on the schedule where you could have either two or three finalist candidates. So.
Good.
That's it until Monday.
That leads me to the first round interviews of the candidates for the IIST279 Superintendent. Will begin at 1:30 PM in the boardroom of the Educational Service Center on Monday, February 27th. The superintendent search interviews conducted by the school board are open to the public. The interviews will not be livestreamed, but will be, will be recorded, consistent with the Government Data Practices Act. Interested persons may request the opportunity to listen to the recording of the search interviews at an appropriate future date. The full interview schedule is available on the district website, and the names of the candidates will be added to that schedule shortly after adjournment. And our last agenda item is adjournment. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Heather Douglas. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sarah Mitchell. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay? Motion passes six to zero.